All right, good morning. I will call the September 4th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order, inform the public of the Open Meetings Act in the northwest corner, and ask for a roll.
Wait.
Here.
Sock, Bryant, Hupkey.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Cooby. Griffith.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ron Felton.
Here.
And I'd ask for approval of the full agenda.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion in a second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And consideration of approval of the minutes from the August 20th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And I would open up the public hearing at the request of Mike and Kerry Weiderin to consider a zoning change from agricultural to one and two family residential district on property addresses 3408 Anderson Street. Anyone care to speak on this? Val.
So I put the map up to show which lot we're talking about, so it is the highlighted red one. Um, this is right next door to the one that just got zone changed here a little while ago. You see, this is the one we're talking about today. This is what we did here, I don't know, a month or so ago. Um, and so the person who did this one also owned this one and sold it to somebody new, so the new person is now wanting to turn it to R1. I'm assuming for the same reasons because of setbacks. Ag has a 15, uh, side to side and a 50 front to back setback, whereas R1 has seven on each side and then 25 in the front, so it's a little easier to, to fit setback-wise, the house.
Thank you, Val. This is a public hearing. Anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Open this up for discussion. Appears to be fairly cut and dry. I would take a motion.
Make a motion to, uh, consider recommendation of a zoning change from agricultural district to one and two family residential district on property addressed as 3408 Anderson Street.
Second motion.
Motion in a second, please vote.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And consideration recommend the approval of the 2025 to 2034 capital improvement program, which includes the 2024 to 2029 one and six-year street improvement plans. Lyle?
Good morning, Commissioner, staff, and citizens. Uh, my name is Lyle. I'm an operations guy for the city. We'll go over CIP this morning. So what you have here before you in your packet, starting on page 11, we can go in as much depth as you want. Um, I'll give you a quick anatomy lesson of how this document came together, comes together, what it does, its purpose it serves, and just know that the, the Planning Commission come visit, have this discussion every year based on, uh, state statutes requirements to do so. We talked at the pre-planning meeting, or excuse me, the sub, uh, Planning Commission subcommittee meeting a couple weeks ago, August 14th, I believe. From here, this, this same document will go to a city council meeting for approval, uh, second meeting in September, the next meeting. So with that being said, was there any general questions overall before we get started? Otherwise, it's on the, Val has it on the screen here too, so the folks in the audience, if they have a question, feel free to, uh, speak up and we can zoom in. But what the CIP is, is a 10-year outlook into the future of purchases in excess of $50,000 for the city. Planning, projection tool helps in the accounting world to keep track of everything that, as much as we can to the best of our ability, looking forward. This process starts in January, goes through March, um, usually with the input of the elected officials, their goals and plans for the, for the city going forward, and it gets integrated into the divisions. Division heads look at what they have within their walls, the equipment they need, the plans, projects, and then they get some instructions on how to fill this out, send it back to a team, which Stephen Ramus, Anna, myself, uh, Randy Gates, Sheila Rios, Andy Colvin will go through and try and make this all work. None of the items on here, as you look through here, are set in stone, meaning, take for instance, number, line number six, a snowplow for the street division. It's a specific item that's meant to be swapped out at the end of its life, but if number six and number seven, uh, say seven's a lemon, it's really beginning to fail bad, we can swap those around. We can bump them forward, we can bump them back. However, all equipment does need to be changed out at some point or another, so we have to be very cautious about bumping equipment too far back because we never know what the future holds for financial times. And if we have another COVID or recession or something along those lines, in bad timing, it can really have a negative effect on the financial plan. Once we gotta get this settled in, uh, March timeframe, April, that's when the, the city goes into their, the division heads go into their budget specifically, uh, how, what they need on a day-to-day basis. So this gets kind of put on the table, we pick up, uh, put on the shelf, we pick up the budgets, start going through that. As those division heads go through those budgets, we realize, okay, we maybe, we need to get a different ambulance or bigger or smaller snowplows or whatever. So then we come back and revisit and polish this off as the budgets finally come together. As you probably recognize, the prices of 2020, 2033, 2034, on any item that you choose is probably not necessarily exactly what it's gonna be when that time comes. So there's an inflationary factor, there's a couple different charts that go into it. Inflationary factor that gets put onto that so that when the time comes to buy that piece of equipment 10 years out, we have the right amount of money set aside for that. This is just kind of the, um, tip of the iceberg when you look at how it gets factored into the long-term financial plan. In the accounting world, and I'm, this is not my subject matter expertise, but I know just enough to talk about it, when we make changes on here, it has a direct impact, a direct impact on the long-term financial plan. That long-term financial plan has to say, stay in the positive. If we start moving stuff around or adding equipment or increasing costs, it makes that long-term financial plan invert, and we have to make other changes to keep that positive. So it's not simply cutting and pasting on a spreadsheet when things need to be changed. There's lots of other ramifications that come along with it. Having said that, though, items do get moved around and added. And that's the general overview. Before we get into the specifics on this, is there any questions yet? Otherwise, as you look at the page here, I'll just try and zoom out. I know this will be hard to read from the audience's standpoint, but the document is made up of, if you're interested in a specific department or division, oh, I should say that this is slightly modified since the, uh, July budget session for some clarity, some, from, some, some wording difference, but generally, it's gonna be the same document if, if you've tuned into that. So the departments are depicted here, divisions, the general description, which, some of it can be fairly complex. We only have a limited amount of space in which to work, so, um, it, it can be hard to, in which to push, put characters, so it can be sometimes confusing on how some of the stuff reads. The priority is depicted here, and that's more of an art than it is a science, and it's driven by what division heads think the priority is, as well as how the CIP team weigh that across the rest of the divisions across the city. The total estimated cost of the project, how much is spent in the prior years, and then how much is going to be spent, we anticipate spending in each of those years. As you'll see, as we go through this, starting with administration of streets, specifically streets, streets is very heavy equipment, heavily equipment-based. A lot of the items that you see on there are pieces of machinery that get swapped out. As we go down to the second page, into the streets, from streets, excuse me, into parks, you'll see that there's a lot of projects. So much of their, uh, makeup in the CIP is project-related. One thing we always, maybe we take for granted a little bit, going back up to streets is the flood control recertification. That's a huge project. You were here in 2019, you saw the value of that, and making sure that that's all on the up and up and kept, kept ready and functioning for, should that ever need to be called upon again. But as we scroll down through the, through the document of parks, all these are, uh, general fund items at first, and it transitions into enterprise funds. Is there anything specific that you want to talk about or see or have questions about there? Or citizens as well?
I, uh, had a question on, I can't remember for the life of me. What was the safe streets for all thing about? That might be more for Steve, I don't know.
So that's, okay. Let's hop down to that one. Safe streets for all. So down on, near the end of the packet, in the CHAF, last page actually, when we search safe streets, it comes up as item number 15. Let me touch on safe streets just, or excuse me, let me touch on CHAF just a little bit, and do you feel comfortable talking about safe streets in a second? Okay. So CHAF at the very end, City Highway and Allocation Fund is money that's designated to go towards street repair in the city. So if you have an interest in which, which street is gonna be fixed where in your neighborhood, this is where you go to look. And when is projected out here. Now, you'll notice that some of them are multi-year deals because it's not, take Benjamin Avenue, for example. It's been a four-year project, five-year project, something like that, where the, the planning of it takes place, the engineering of it takes place, and then the bidding process and getting everything going. So just because we see equipment show up on the street to start tearing stuff out, start doing the work, doesn't mean that's when the project started. Usually, it started a year or two in advance. We just see the, that phase of the project at this point. So with that said, the question is about safe streets, and Anna, do you feel comfortable talking about line number 15 as it, in regards to safe streets?
Yes. Um, I'm not sure how far back you want me to go, but quick overview on our safe streets. Um, we applied for a grant so that 209,300 is, uh, federal grant dollars that we received for putting together the action plan for the safe streets for all. And then 89,700 is the city's match requirement, uh, for that grant. So with the safe streets, it's an action plan grant, and so we've gone through and, um, we've hired a consultant tool designed to help us put this plan together. So we've been working with them, get, uh, gathering our existing policies and procedures, uh, when it comes to all things transportation related in the city, historical crash data. Um, they've gone through, kind of looked at our, our intersections, our, you know, how many stoplights, crosswalks, things like that we have, and then we've just wrapped up our community engagement section of that. And so they'll gather all of that, um, feedback from the community, and then we'll move forward on, um, the act, finishing the action plan, which will include, you know, revising some of our policies and procedures on, on how we, um, do things here in the city as far as transportation planning, or, um, you know, if we have a new development, you know, different ways to implement, uh, better transportation systems when, you know, when it comes to trails or crosswalks, sidewalks, things like that. So, um, that'll wrap up next spring. And then there's also a, um, another chance for a grant with an implementation grant. So then if we identify projects through this we want to do, then we would apply for that implementation grant to pay for those projects.
And the survey closed, is that right?
Yes.
Or could we, oh dang.
Yes.
They, they had a community survey for citizens to weigh in on where they think streets are safe, or unsafe, both actually, but window on that closed.
Yep. We got a lot of feedback from that, so looking forward to see what, uh, what we kind of have from that.
Did you happen to see some of the results of the, where the model thought the streets weren't necessarily that safe?
I did, yeah. Well, as part of that survey, you could look on that map, and it would show you what everybody else has put on there. And so, um, it was spread, it was spread throughout town. Um, everybody had different things to say. Um, you know, some people said, you know, the lighting isn't good, you know, if they're taking a trail or a sidewalk, and they like to walk, um, you know, things like lighting or things like the, the sidewalk condition itself, or, you know, lack of connections.
It was a very interesting map. It's a zoom-in sort of Google, um, map where people have dropped lots of points, and you, oftentimes, we think how, all we ever hear is the negative, but actually, there was a number of good, good things that were brought up as well. The bulk of them were negative, but actually, that's what we're looking for, where the concerns are. But there was positives there as well. Anna brings up another good point here that I kind of skipped over, making the assumption, using that example that she has there, you'll see, or that we have up for the safe streets, FA and GT. One thing that's required on the CIP is we can't just put a project in there without knowing where the funding source comes from. So everything depicted here has to have a pocket in which it gets paid out of. That pocket, as you look at this, um, FA and GT, all of that can be found across the top of the page, what those abbreviations mean, and where their funding sources are coming from. Good question. Others?
Uh, with that overlay, or not overlay, excuse me, the, uh, the bypass up north?
Okay. Yep, so.
Check a couple of funding, the funding sources for that. I thought some of it was great.
Let's see, was that, did, do you see it on here, what number, what line that was?
I don't remember.
Uh, let's do a little search here.
So, right, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I was, I can weigh in on that too. Um, this last, uh, winter, um, the county had applied for a RACE grant. It was a RACE planning grant, um, to look at extending the, uh, bypass, the industrial highway extension along, uh, to the west and south side of town. Um, and so there was a, a match from the city for that, for that project. Correct. So we had, so we, we had some dollars there in the CIP, um, for that, for that planning, for the industrial highway extension.
So about, as we went through the last, last year's cycle, uh, for the budget that we're currently in, both the, the, we worked with the county and identified, I think there's $75,000 in line item in there for that extension, if I remember correctly, or maybe it's 75,000 for two years, 150 total. Um, that's a match, that was set up as a match in the budget with the county for a corridor preservation study. Um, after we had put that, put the budget together and identified that funding for the corridor preservation, um, working with the county then last, this past year, we decided to pursue a joint, kind of a, a joint grant application for, um, a RACE grant, and we combined with, Madison County was lead, Pierce County was part of it, and we were another partner in that. The RACE grants, uh, part of, is, as part of the scoring system, look for partnerships in local government. And so we really saw that and thought there was a lot of synergy around, uh, working together as the three, three governmental entities, um, on that. We were not successful, um, so I'm not sure whether we'll move forward in, in terms of identifying a corridor and trying to, and put a preservation over that corridor, or whether we'll wait for the next grant cycle. Um, we haven't had that conversation yet, but that's kind of the background there.
It did, we did find it here on, in CHAF, line number 14, what Stephen and Anna were talking about as far as funding source. And it's for the record. This is not necessarily where it's gonna be placed, it's just a, a consideration of what that would look like, a very high-level overview of where that would go, that same sort of improvement east of town versus how it would go west.
And so in the partnership between the two counties, um, this would be, you know, one potential outcome of that. The other potential outcome, we look to just extending straight west and connecting over to what we would call the Pierce, the Pierce Road, um, which I think is another two miles west. And then we would do improvements, um, on that, going north, all the way up north into Pierce, uh, as well as, um, connecting south into Highway 275.
Yeah. Another good question. Is there others?
Number 20.
Number 20, what division, on CHAF, very good. Let's pull that up here. CHAF number 20, vacate Phillips, Phillips Street, 6th to 7th, reopen Parks, Park 6th to 7th. That is scheduled right now tentatively for 25, 26.
That's by the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
That's correct.
At the time, at the time we had that before us, I thought there was some discussion of orphan grain train funding some of that, um, because, uh, it was being done to facilitate, facilitate truck traffic for them using Phillips Street.
Six. Vacate Phillips 6th to 7th, reopen Park, Park 6th to 7th. So 6th to 7th on Philip right there.
Yeah.
And I, do we feel comfortable talking about this as far as their project-related?
So, yeah, so there's been a, um, been a request, uh, to, to close Philip as a function of orphan grain trains expansion there and just the, the work that they do there, um, sort of tied into safe streets for all, that whole conversation of, you know, how do we eliminate conflict areas between, between the public and, and traffic? Um, actually, when Park was closed, the conversation at, at the time was to close Philip and keep Park open. Uh, I don't necessarily understand everything that went on there, then, and what drove the decision to keep Philip open. Uh, we'll, we'll explore that as, as we continue the conversation. Um, but, uh, just looking again, we have a fairly substantial, uh, industry there and, uh, a lot of activity in that corridor, and so it certainly makes sense to consider closing Philip and then reopening Park and, and doing some improvements at Park. So, um, you know, whether or not orphan grain train has any financial component of that, uh, obviously, they would, they would have to do some work, um, on the Philip portion itself, uh, through, through their compound. Um, but, you know, right now, it's just identified in there as a, as a city highway allocation cost. We've also been, um, as part of that conversation, um, the Railroad Transportation Safety District has, I think, put, I don't remember if it was 250 or, or 325, but I know they allocated some funding within the Railroad Transportation Safety District's budget, uh, if we wanted to put a, a, um, a gate, a rail, a rail gate, the automatic gates to close, um, on, on Park as part of that. Um, so those are, those are the conversations that are going on right now, um, working with the Department of Transportation, the railroads, um, just to identify what all might be required to, to close that.
Other questions? Otherwise, pending approval, actually, I don't know if you, if you even need to prove it, it's gonna go to the city council meeting next time anyway.
I just think it's a unique document that's.
Oh, thank you.
It is, yeah, it is a unique document. A lot of folks don't even know it exists, and it answers, it creates a lot of questions when you look at it because it's a monstrosity when you open it, but once you kind of start looking at how it's made up, it answers a lot of questions and really paints a good picture on the future of the city.
It's nice to see, I mean, a lot of Bs and Cs as far as urgency goes, uh, just, uh, the work of, you know, city personnel that goes into it, makes something, uh, what makes the community. So I, I appreciate the time and effort.
Yeah, I would like to throw a kudos out to the employees because, you know, they, they do a great job of taking care of the equipment. We have an incredible maintenance division that can really extend the life of equipment, sometimes maybe past its useful working life, but all of this stuff is purchased through taxpayers. So when they extend that 10-year piece of equipment out to 12 or 14, 15 years, it saves that much more money for them. So they, they, the employees do an incredible job with sometimes treating, oftentimes treating equipment and money for the city better than maybe in their own lives. So, great value in that. Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks, Lyle.
Take a motion.
Make a motion to consider approval of the 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program, which includes the 2024 through 2029 one and six-year street improvements plan.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
All commission members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
This time, is there any other open topics or concerns? Good morning.
Good morning. Um, thank you for the opportunity this morning to address you. I just wanted to talk about the issue of blight and determination, blight, um, determination. A few weeks ago, during the, uh, the meeting, there was a blight determination, and some statements were made that perhaps you had no alternative other than to approve blight if it met minimum state standards. Um, and after reflecting on that, I, I just want to offer the following thoughts. Um, if the process was only about determining if enough blocks are checked on the blight in substandard form, then there really would not be a purpose for a public hearing. Um, number two, state law limits communities from blighting to a maximum of 35% of their landmass. If we simply approved everything that meets minimum standards, there would be no determination of what is the most desirable for the community. And number three, there was a Supreme Court ruling of prime realty versus the city of Omaha, and I just wanted to read a few things from that Supreme Court ruling, and you can look it up online, but a couple clips. It says, "Nothing in the statutory scheme suggests that a blighted designation is permanent. Further, nothing in the statutory scheme requires that an area be declared blighted even if it meets all the statutory criteria."
even if it meets all the statutory criteria." So clearly, you have the opportunity to make your own determination as to whether or not you want to make that property blighted. One other paragraph, "Prime Realty asserts that it made a legitimate claim of entitlement to TIF funds. However, the record makes clear that the decision-making process regarding, regarding TIF applications is a discretionary process. Even if the TIF application filed by Prime Realty to assist with the Coca-Cola project had met all of the necessary criteria, the TIF committee was free to deny the application in favor of other projects which they deemed more worthy." So I just wanted to share that with you, that even though a determination study may check all the boxes, you still have the authority to use your own discretion. And so then, the question becomes, what is that discretion? Is the property to be developed truly blighted, not including the other properties that have been tacked on to it that is not going to be developed? Is the property itself that's going to be developed truly blighted? And number two, is the blight in the community interest, considering the fact that the city, the county, the airport, the NRD, the schools, et cetera, get no new property tax revenue for 15 or 20 years, depending upon that development. The services provided by those taxing entities are provided to the homes and businesses in the newly developed areas, the same as they're provided to every other home and business in Norfolk. Those services are not free, they cost money. Thus, the citizens of the community have to make up for the difference, because the services have to be provided to those new homes and businesses, the rest of the citizens have to make up that difference, they have to pay extra taxes, nothing is free. So it's important to make an informed determination as to whether the blight, the blight is supported by the majority of the community. The city process, as it is today, puts you at a complete disadvantage in trying to make that determination. You don't have the necessary information on the proposed development to understand if it's, would generate that community support. It's something I've been expressing to the city for a while now, is the necessity to change their process, to require that detailed information on the proposed development and the TIF request in advance. And I just wanted to have the opportunity to share this information, including the Supreme Court ruling, that seems to very clearly indicate that you do have that determination, that ability to make that determination separate and apart from whether it meets state, minimum state standards, so, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for that research and time, Jim, thank you.
Thank you. Any other open topics or concerns? Seeing none, I ask motion to adjourn.